We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fruen.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here, thank you. We're going to go ahead and start with public comment, and we have public comment up to three minutes. And let me grab my glasses. Glenn Ludwig, would you please come forward and would you state your name and address for the record, please, sir? Thank you, and you have three minutes.
It won't take me three, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for this opportunity. What reminded me about the opportunity to make a comment tonight was I noted on the agenda that you're on item 8E that public comments are going to be discussed a little bit this evening, and I certainly am a big supporter of transparency. But I've had an experience recently, I just wanted to share with everybody, not only you people, but the people in the audience, that about 60 days ago, I took the time to draft a email to the entire council. And I spent a lot of time on it because I wanted to be articulate and to not be too negative, but I had some points I wanted to make. I want to report to everybody that I've had just excellent response from that. I've had an opportunity to have coffee and conversation or phone conversations with many members of the council. The reason I haven't got 100 percent around is my fault because I haven't made the contact. So anyway, I want, the point is, I think there's other ways to very effectively communicate with the council other than purely in the public comment section of the meeting, but I very much appreciate these continuing to be offered and so forth. So that was the main thing I wanted to say. I'm also excited tonight to hear that you're going to have and to hear myself an update on the comprehensive planning process because I think that's going to give a clearer vision for not only the public, but also the council and leaders across this area, and I think that is extremely important, and I'm excited about it. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you, Glenn. Next, Ken, and I apologize if I'm not pronouncing this correctly, Lobaska?
Lobaska.
Oh, the H is solid. Okay, thank, Lobaska. Thank you. Mr. Lobaska, would you please again state your name for the, and also your address at the record?
Ken Lobasko, 1911 Gailey.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me for a brief comment to address a few concerns. This is my first time ever coming to one of these, so although I have watched a few on the, you know, on the computer. I happen to be watching a couple months ago when Mayor Renner, in my opinion verbally accosted Alderman Sterns for wanting to discuss some items on the budget to help reduce some costs. I feel that Mayor Renner was deliberate to do this publicly and tried to intimidate Alderman Sterns. I kind of bit my lip for a long time about it, and I just felt like coming forward now with this stuff. I'm kind of appalled that no other council member stood up to, for Mrs. Sterns, nor has the mayor apologized for his outburst. It is not the mayor's job to verbally abuse council members who do not agree with him or blame them for poor performance of city staff. The council was elected to represent the citizens, and Alderman Sterns was doing what she believed she was elected to do. It would be nice if the rest of the council did that as well. You are not supposed to just rubber stamp everything the mayor and the city manager would like, and you're essentially the checks and balances to the office. Secondly, I recently read and heard that there have been some turnover from mid to high-level staff within the city. The morale of the city seems to be pretty low, and I don't believe it's because of any members of the council. I think the blame falls squarely on the city manager and ultimately the mayor. I wonder if any evaluation was done on the city manager prior to you voting on his substantial pay raise. I personally know two people that work within the city. They're pretty low-level people, and they were really upset when they found out about the raise when they themselves only received about, I think he told me it was about 2%, which was pretty much nothing for him. In my opinion, you know, people seem to be leaving their jobs. The Coliseum stuff that I hear in the meetings and I hear with other people is in shambles. The budget process, in my opinion, was a joke, and you have raised taxes which really torqued me off and will probably need to do them again soon. I applaud Alderman Sterns and Alderman Lauer for their efforts to reduce costs and make this government more efficient. The rest of the brigade, I would hopefully take a page out of their playbook and do some critical thinking before following all kinds of tax increases and everything just blindly. And I also pray that the citizens do their job at the ballot box next election and help get the city on track. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to recognition and appointments, and we have an oath of office for Police Officer Brant Parsley. And Police Chief, where, oh, there you are, I'm sorry. Come on forward.
Mayor and council, other distinguished guests, my fellow officers, come on in.
And anyone's family, everyone, please come along to take pictures and everything. Thanks.
We're here tonight for the oath of office for Officer Michael Brant Parsley. Brant grew up in Fairfield, Illinois, in Wayne County, received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Southern Illinois University of Edwardsville in 2004. Eventually went on to work for the Mount Carmel Police Department as a patrol officer from 2007 until he joined the ranks of the Bloomington Police Department in 2013. Tonight, he's joined here by his daughter Lexa, his mother Pam Lane, and his grandmother, Joy Cook. As you can see by our turnout, we are very pleased to have him and honored that he will be taking this oath to officially join our ranks. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Take camera.
Then we have, we move right along to our consent agenda, but before we do, I just wanted to let everybody know, we have an unusually tight timeline tonight, and so I'm going to need to be a little bit more draconian in making sure that we all stay within our time limits, and I'm also going to include myself in that. There is a couple things I want to make comments on, and I'm going to confine my comments to between 60 to 90 seconds, including my mayoral remarks at the end, so that we can make sure that we move forward and we're as productive as possible this evening. And that being said, we have, a consent agenda is presented, but there is a, item 7O is already being removed, and the city manager has informed me, and they have requested that. Correct. And are there any other items? So the consent agenda would not include item 7O. Are there any other items on the consent agenda that any members of the council would seek to pull?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes, 7D and 7I.
7D and 7I. Any others? Alderman Fazini? Were those yours?
No, 7C.
Okay. 7C, CD and I. Any other items to be pulled? And I will start in the order, the alphabetical order in which they're pulled, okay? So if there are any, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of items 7C, D, and I?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, moved by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fazini. And actually, Alderman Fruen?
Mayor, with regard to the consent and the regular agenda, I have not received any monies or any financial benefits from any of the organizations or individuals referenced in these specific agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Oh, that's right, we can, never mind. Okay. Should be doing this. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce. Thank you. And we move right along then to item 7C, and I'm taking this now in the order in which they were announced, but alphabetically. Item 7C, Alderman Fazini, you pulled that?
I did. I need to recuse myself for a conflict of interest, please.
Okay, all right. And do we have a motion to approve item 7C on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd make that motion to approve.
Moved by Alderman Fruen. Excuse me, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. And we're going to go ahead and vote on that, one item 7C. The motion carries eight to nothing. There are no nays to announce, and if we could have, oh, there he is. He's already back, Alderman Fazini. Now we move on to item 7D, and that was pulled by Alderman Lauer. Would you, turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. I just, I'm still in quandary here. I don't understand how much this is going to cost us over the long term, the care and maintenance of these animals. It's my understanding that we have had this type of bird at Miller Park many years past, and they weren't handled properly, or for some reason they passed away prematurely, and I'm just, I'm concerned that we're going to go down that same path here. If we're not handling them properly, or if we can't really afford to handle them properly, that it's just going to be a great additional expense. We're operating in the red, as I understand it, on an annual basis, and we're having to subsidize the zoo as it is. I realize that the Zoological Society is putting forth a great effort to try to make it more than it is and try to bring it a little closer to being in the black, and I applaud all those efforts, I'm sure, but I'm just in question as to whether this is the right way to go. I'm hearing an awful lot from the neighbors, I'm hearing an awful lot from folks in my ward, my constituents, that they really don't want this right now.
Okay. If we could generally have, want to turn it over to Mr. Tetzloff or city manager, would you like to begin?
Yes, we certainly have Jay Tetzloff. We're very fortunate to have him as our zoo superintendent, and do, you know, want to remind the council that the zoo master plan is a document approved by the council with a lot of support, the Miller Park Zoological Society. So we can certainly ask Jay to kind of comment on that or any other questions they may have on this particular contract tonight.
Well, I guess I'd start with Alderman Lauer. If I feel we can't adequately care for an animal, we're not going to have it at the zoo. As we looked at our animals, animals we wanted to bring and animals we have, we would not even consider animals that we did not feel we could adequately care for and exceed expectations of the care. What happened years ago, I can't answer that. I've been here five years, I can answer what's happened in the last five years. The addition with the flamingo exhibit, well, according to our consultants, believe it'll add 5% to our attendance, and that should build as we move forward. So we feel it'll add more, it'll raise more revenue for the zoo and to bring that subsidy level down.
Can you fill me in on what the additional expense is to build this exhibit and then maintain it?
The total cost for the exhibit is $250,000. $100,000 of that has been privately raised that the society is willing to, is ready to give to the city for this project. In terms of long-term care, feeding a group of flamingos is not an expensive item. Staff-wise, we don't plan to add any full-time staff for this project. In terms of other costs, in terms of heating, let's say, these birds can tolerate 10 degrees down, or 20 degrees, so a lot of heating is not involved. We also plan to have newer, like floor heat, for example, which is usually cheaper than other extremes, so we can have our building at a lower temperature. So the cost should not be extreme by any stretch. It's one of the reasons we picked the flamingo exhibit. It's a low cost to build and a low cost for upkeep.
Just if I could clarify, this did come up at our open house, in the mayor's open house we have every Friday, and just to clarify for the audience and others that the idea was, that the city would spend $150,000, that was a matching agreement by the city that a contract that the city had agreed, correct? That we would match a dollar and a half for every dollar that was raised by the private sector?
Yeah, that was the arrangement we, as we, the budget went forward and the master plan funding.
Right, and then that's where the $250,000 totally comes from?
Correct.
And so, and this line item here is still the $75,000. Is this in addition to the $150,000?
This, the, $75,000, that includes the design of the South America piece, which is 100% being funded by the society. The idea there is we're putting, okay, let me step back. The flamingo exhibit is $250,000. A project that's coming soon is the South America piece, which is Galapagos, Tortoises, Giant Heater, and Bush Dog. After consulting with different people, architects mostly, if we lump those two projects together and design them at the same time, we can bring our costs down, excuse me. So the society agreed to pay for the design of the South American exhibits, and what it is, it brought our costs down for both projects.
Okay, so what, I'm still confused here, I'm sorry.
You're asking if the $75 included in the $250?
Yes, I am. Is that included in the $250?
$75,000 is not in addition to the quarter of a million.
What part of that is?
It's not, there's, no, it's not in addition. The design cost for, so the breakdown exactly for flamingo exhibit design is $33,720. To design the South America exhibit is $21,820. That is being paid by the society. They're paying 100% of that. A survey for the construction sites potentially is $4,200, and the flamingo exhibit construction phase for the architect to oversee the construction is $15,210. So the flamingo exhibit, the survey, and the construction oversight is part of the $250 for flamingos.
Okay. I also have concerns, I understand that part, I also have concerns about eating up a lot of our green space out there with this big expansion. Miller Park is only so big, and we see a lot of folks out. The Fourth of July, it was packed. I have concerns that we're going to have a larger footprint and not really be able to facilitate the folks that normally come out.
This exhibit is 100% inside the zoo, current zoo. When you step inside the zoo, when you walk into the zoo, the first animal you'll see is a flamingo. So it's not stepping outside the current boundaries right now. As the master plan builds out 20 years from now, then yes, we do go out into the park some. Where the road is now, that'll be removed, and that's a major safety issue that we have also.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Sterns.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. The one-third expansion of the parking, that comes later. I understand parking will be in?
That is part of the?
That's part of closing the street there?
Part of I, that's all.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, that's part of the other thing, but I just wanted to follow up on that, and I was a little bit confused about all the different, I appreciate your breakdown, which you just, you just gave us some of the different South American flamingos and all that. Here, I think what would clarify a little bit more for me is what is the total coming from the Zoological Society? Because I thought they were only, basically were, had about $100,000. Now, are they, is that about right, or?
For this individual project, they're paying $100,000 of the $250.
Okay, and that's including South American design and all of that?
No, the 100 is, we're receiving 104 flamingos, it's $100,000 from the society. The society's cost is $150,000. As with this proposal that we have in front of you, or the additional 21,8, I'm sorry, $21,820, that's 100% going to be paid for by the society.
Okay.
Because that's a design in the future.
And that's for the South American?
That's for the South America.
So we're spending $250 for flamingos plus the 21-something for the South American design? Is that right?
Correct. That's being reimbursed by the society.
So the society is really putting in 120-some thousand?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, and I, because I couldn't quite appreciate that. And my concern continues to be exactly the same as it was during the budget process for me. This isn't necessarily a question for you, Jay, but because I do appreciate all of your, all of your input. But the question for me is and has always been needs versus wants. And when we are raising, you know, three taxes, I realize some of it, just, you know, motorfield just goes for roads, I understand that, but when we are raising three taxes, and we're raising utility taxes on people, you know, everyone, fixed incomes, everyone, it's highly concerning to me about the affordability of the city, of living in the city of Bloomington, and how many, you know, extras, how many things nice to have, we can really afford. And to me, this is definitely one of those things that is an extra, a want maybe, but not a need. So I totally support, you know, keeping up with the zoo and maintaining it and enhancing it. This, to me, is a frivolity that the citizens are telling me loud and clear, you know, don't raise our taxes, get down to the business of streets, police, and the things that we truly need, and this is, this is not one of them. So that is why I will be not continue to support this, or I will not support it as I did not in the budget process. Thank you.
We're going to move on. Alderman Black, and again, we're, we don't have a time limit on this particular discussion, but I'm going to have to call it pretty close to.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, you know, we were talking about all the different numbers and the different projects, and I just need a better understanding because it kind of got muddled as we answered some of these questions. So at a very high level here, the city committed in the last budget cycle $150,000 towards the zoo, under the understanding that the Zoological Society is going to pick up $100,000, right?
Correct.
We're still on the same page here. Is this proposal coming out of that, that $150 that we're suggesting, that we've already budgeted towards it, or is it above and beyond that $150? I want to be very clear about, because it was very confusing in what I'm hearing in this conversation.
And I, okay, so let me, I'll take a step back of the, and hopefully I'll make this clearer. Right now, we're asking $74,950 be approved. If you look at the breakdown, $43,072 is paid for by the society, and $31,878 is paid for by the city.
Right, is that, that's out of that $100,000, out of that $150 that we have committed already, correct?
That, except for the design for the South America. And I apologize, it's, I wish it was real easy to explain, it's not, obviously.
Because my understanding is, I mean, I understand that it is confusing, but we're looking at a amount of money that we've budgeted towards the zoo. Is that money that whatever that might be spent towards coming out of that $150 that we have committed to you guys, or is this in addition to that $150,000?
There is no additional cost. That's what I'm getting at.
And that's why it was on the consent agenda.
That's what I'm getting at. Okay, thank you very much.
Again, to just clarify for everybody, the city in the past had agreed contractually to match private contributions, a dollar and a half to dollar, and that came out to $100,000 and $150,000, private, public. In addition to that, the society is paying for $22,000 and change for the South American exhibit on top of that. So it is confusing, but just to clarify. Anything else? Alderman Fazini, and we're going to vote.
I would like to make a motion that we accept 7D as proposed, which is our contractual obligation, actually.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that.
Second by Alderman, Alderman Schmidt. Go ahead and vote, please, everyone. Thank you. It's not letting you? Oh, there we go. Okay. All right, the motion passes seven to two. Would you please announce, Madam Clerk, the nays?
The nays are Alderman Lauer and Alderman Sterns.
Thank you, Mr. Tetzloff. Actually, you may want to stand up, that's right, we have one more. Okay. We have now item 7I, and I will turn that to Alderman Lauer. I understand you had concerns on that one as well.
Yes, again, operational expense is ongoing, and the fact that we're operating in the red, and it appears to me that it will continue to bleed money in addition to what we've been subsidizing. I think that we're committing to more than we're really able to at this point. I've also got, you know, in, in the proposal here, you're talking about a, you're talking about an additional, talking about an additional snack vending area inside the zoo. And the neighbors are asking me why we're not operating the vending area that we've got out there currently. So we're going to go ahead and, we're not, we're not operating one that we've got that's very nearby, probably within less than a block, and then we're going to go ahead and build. very nearby, probably within less than a block, and then we're gonna go ahead and build another new one, and probably continue not to operate the one that we've got. I don't understand why we would do that.
The, I can't answer the outside concession stand, that's always been at the parks director level, as far as I have been informed. I can't answer to your question about the concession stand for the zoo. We have never had one in our, well, we have not had one in the near past, for sure. We feel by adding this concession stand and enlarging our gift shop, we will be able to raise more funds, and again, bringing down our subsidy, trying to make the zoo more sustainable. We want to, we understand the economy's tough, we want to be able to bring in more revenue and be less efficient, and be more sustainable as we move forward, as, from an operational standpoint.
But just to clarify, if I can clarify, this, this motion is to accept $700,000?
I got that.
And the cost to us is $5,000?
That's correct, sir, and my question and my concern here lies in beyond that. We're gonna continue to operate in the red, and a good chance that this is gonna add to that expense, if it's not successful. So maybe fill me in on, on why you would, you know, conjecture that this is actually gonna make more money for the zoo, and you're gonna be closer to operating in the black.
I can go back to two things. I can go to what our consultants, who are experts in the zoo field, who have gone out to other zoos and seen what they can do. I can give my firsthand account to seeing what other zoos can, what zoos can do personally, being in the business as long as I have, seeing that concession stands can actually, will make a profit. I'm not gonna be dumb enough to guarantee you, but I, I can sit here and say, I feel very, very confident that by adding a larger gift shop, expanding that piece, and having a concession stand, one that serves our guests, because we hear, that's our number one complaint we hear, is we don't have food for our guests, but also to have a window out to the public that are in the park, that are enjoying the, everything that Miller Park has to offer, like the spray ground, the playgrounds, miniature golf, all the things that are out there. And also, the $5,000 that we're asking for here is also reimbursable, so there actually is no city cost to these projects.
Well, not up front, but down the road, certainly operationally, as we expand, there could be. Am I wrong?
We believe that these projects should raise more revenue than our expenses.
Very much. Alderman Schmidt.
Yes, thank you. I certainly think that the zoo master plan addressed these in a really successful way, and I feel confident about this. I think it's a really good investment, and it's an investment that's a public-private partnership that, you know, we're looking at over the last 10 years, $1.5 million. I really think that this has stepped in the right direction in taking care of something that's an asset to our community. And I would like to make a motion that we approve this project agreement between the zoo and the IDNR.
Is there a second?
All second.
Second.
Okay, I got several seconds. I believe Alderman Black was the second, the first second. And we will, Alderman Sage, once.
Just one quick question. Jay, you just alluded to it, but it may have gotten lost in kind of the conversation. The concession stand for the zoo will also serve folks, didn't, isn't that what you just said? Will have a window that services folks who are visiting the park but not attending the zoo.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, I think we'll go ahead and vote then, please. The motion carries 8 to 1. Madam Clerk, would you announce the nays?
The lone nae vote is Alderman Lauer.
Okay. Now, we're gonna go to our regular agenda, and that, the first item is item 8A, and just, I'm sorry, there's gonna be an amendment later, but item 8A, ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $26 million general obligation refunding bonds for the city of Bloomington, McLean County, Illinois, for the purposes of refunding the 2004 Coliseum bond. And this is essentially to save us money, I'll turn it over to City Manager, but essentially we, when we first floated the bonds, perhaps because there were promises that the Coliseum was supposed to make money, they did not send, they did not issue bonds that were tax-exempt, we're proposing to reissue them, and to try to take advantage of that and save us, the city taxpayers' money, and City Manager David Hales.
Mayor, and as you stated, that's correct, back when the $30 million was borrowed to build the Coliseum, the bond debt that was issued was taxable bonds. This is actually, as you've seen in the backup report, what we're calling maybe Phase 2, of addressing not only converting some of those taxable bonds to tax-exempt, but also continuing to look for opportunities where we can lower our future debt service costs by taking advantage of a very attractive market where interest rates are at a historic low. We, as you indicated, we do believe that the savings, possible savings from this particular refunding on a present value basis is just gonna be a little less than $6 million. Patty Lynn, our Silva, our finance director, is out of town on some emergency family business, but we do have here tonight with us Todd Kraskowski, managing director of Mesro Financial, and Linda Givens, partner with Chapman and Cutler, who's serving as our bond counsel. What I'd like to do is ask Mr. Kraskowski to come up and just very briefly mention what this transaction is going to entail, what we hope to achieve with this, and then also Linda Givens would be available for any questions on the actual ordinance, which we're asking the council to approve tonight in order to allow us to proceed with this proposed refunding issue, so.
And again, just as the timekeeper, because we are really going on time, we have 17 minutes, so if you could be brief, and same thing with counsel, thank you.
Thank you very much, City Manager Hales, and again, Todd Kraskowski from Mesro Financial. And to be pretty, you know, basic and direct about the refinancing opportunity right now, one thing I'm not gonna be telling anybody here is that interest rates are favorable, right? We continue to hear that in the press, okay? Back in 2004, when these bonds were originally issued, interest rates on them, for taxable bonds, the interest rates on the outstanding bonds are anywhere from 5.5% to 6.38%, okay? 6.38%. So that's where the bonds are at right now. We believe, we know from the current market here, interest rates are really 200 to 350 basis points lower than that. So, you know, we're talking about reducing the interest cost by 2 to 3.5% from that roughly, you know, 5.5 to 6.38 level. So that's what provides you the savings opportunity. Again, Mesro Financial doesn't provide that opportunity, nobody, you know, provides that in here, the markets provide that, and you pay attention to that. And if you execute at a time when the rates are where they're at, you can lock in the savings, no different than we do for our personal, our personal loans. The other driver, which is a little bit different than a personal loan that we have, is, usually like a personal loan, we can refinance it at any time, because you can prepay it at any time. With a municipal bond here in this case, the first optional redemption date, okay, for these bonds, is June 1st of 2014. So you're upon the time right now where you can willingly go in and reduce that interest cost and immediately replace the outstanding bonds with lower interest costs without having to escrow anything to this redemption date. So again, that's a driver which was very functional in having your administration look very closely at this right, this opportunity right now, because you don't want to be in a position where your bond covenants allow you to reduce your interest costs, and you willingly go, you know, past the optional redemption date and say, we want to pay a higher interest cost. So those are the things that are, your bond documents and the marketplace are driving your, your opportunity here. The other thing, from a credit rating standpoint, and you've heard me talk a little bit about this in the past, is it's just good management practice to be able to execute the covenants that really you put in your bond documents over 10 years ago. They're there to be used. If interest rates were 7 or 8%, you wouldn't be using this covenant, okay? But when they're much lower, you have to, you know, at least analyze whether or not you want to pull the trigger on that.
Okay.
So that's really some of the-
Well, thank you, I'm gonna go to see if there are questions from the council, questions. Alderman Sterns.
Thank you for the information, and understand the market drives, you know, just cost savings and all of that, the interest rates. But here's my question. Now, I'm looking at the ad valorem, part of this, the ad valorem property taxes that need to be, that need to ensure the payments. And I did ask a question, got the answer that the payments will be made primarily out of sales tax. So help me with this part of the ordinance, if you would, that talks about ad valorem property taxes. And I would assume this is a guarantee for, you know, the purchasers of the bonds, for the market, I would assume. I don't know, you can help me. But I guess the other question is, because I want to be concise here, if we add up all these payments, of course, we're looking at some 58 million or something like that, which may be well less than what we would have paid, but can you help me with the total that the city is going to actually be paying out? Let's just say that we never refinance, that all this is, you know, all this goes forward to the end, and we pay all the interest, and then we pay the principal at the end. And what's the total? I mean, can you, is that, is that a real question, or an okay question?
Todd, why don't we first bring Linda Givens up, and let's first answer the first part of the question.
I think I'm about, gonna forget what I asked.
And also, Linda, if you could talk about how we can abate those taxes, and which we do pretty routinely, as many cities do.
Good evening. With respect to the tax levy, the city has, back when the $30 million was originally issued, the determination was to issue those bonds as general obligation bonds supported by a property tax levy. And you're absolutely correct, investors in the bonds prefer to purchase bonds with that kind of unlimited property tax backup.
Okay.
Historically, the city has used sales taxes to make the debt service payments, and annually abates the property tax.
So how does that work? The abate, I mean-
Right, the levy to pay the bonds is included in this ordinance, but then each year, when you go through your annual budget, you make a determination to allocate and appropriate sales taxes to the payment of debt service, and then that levy for that year is taken off of the tax rolls.
Okay.
Essentially, we pay ourselves back.
And that makes, that makes perfect sense, but again, to be, try to be concise and get it all here, thank you for that, totally understand that, that's good news. What would the eventuality be, and heaven forbid, that the sales tax were not, you know, adequate? Now, I believe we take this out of our sales tax first, but what, how does that work if ever the sales tax somehow, you know, were not?
Then the property tax would not be abated.
Okay.
Is already on the books, and on file with the county clerk, and would be extended.
Okay, and thank you for that.
And then what about the total? The total, I think you're asking for the total amount?
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, and I want to reference the handout that you had in the council package, the multicolored handout.
Well, I got the council packet, but I, I don't know if I got an extra handout, I'm sorry. You know, I have everything, I have the, what, 50 pages or so in the packet, is what I'm looking at.
What I have is a total in here of, the total debt service on the original Coliseum bonds from 2011.
Table, is it in the table?
If I can, I think you may find that, look at the very back, after the bond ordinance. I think it may have been the last item in this section 8A.
What pages are on?
Seven, yeah, right near the back.
Maybe if you just tell us the total.
So anyway, you have a multicolored sheet.
Right.
I think it's maybe three pages from the back.
So the total then is?
Well, in the orange column there, the 63 million, $20,000.
Okay, and that's what I thought, from the, what I saw in the ordinance, and I appreciate that.
And the original debt service, if you had never refinanced anything. And what we're talking about here, by the combination of the prior refinancing you've done in 2011, as well as this proposed one, you would be reducing that $63 million number to just under $49 million, so.
Okay.
And that gross debt service reduction-
You're saving about $14 million?
$14,000, yes.
Okay, and that's helpful, thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions, Alderman Fazini?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
That we approve as recommended.
Okay, that's item 8. 8, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion passes 9 to 0, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. We move right along then, and to item 8B, comprehensive master plan, existing conditions analysis presented by Vazoo from the McLean County Regional Planning Director, excuse me, Executive Director, in 20 minutes, and I, I'm gonna have to be tight with that, Vazoo, and then we will begin, so we have 15 minutes of discussion afterwards. And again, this is just a presentation, and I've got you at 6, or 7:42.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, good evening. I will try to squeeze my 51 slides in 20 minutes, so I'm going to go at full speed. I'm assuming most of this information probably was presented to you in bits and pieces as part of other projects, so hopefully it won't be too bad in that speed. Again, existing conditions is the first phase of the comprehensive plan, which is an 18-month-long process, and this, this phase is really needed, because long-range planning is for 20, 25 years. And unless we have a good understanding of where we are today, it's extremely hard to establish a reference point in, from which we form the goals and visions. It also helps us to make accurate projections and forecasts for the future. What it is, I'll try to talk about what it is not, this is just not a bunch of facts. We don't have any solutions yet. What it really is, is putting the facts into context and framing some key issues. Majority of this has been done using location-based analysis with geographic information system. Data sources are mostly from state and national data sources such as census and BLS, Bureau of Labor Statistics, et cetera. And some of the information is from local publications, like say, county health plan or the fire department's plan. Some of the limitations of the data analysis is, of course, data availability, and data used in this analysis spanned several years, from 2007 to 2013, so there might be a variation in that. And some of the data that'll be presented here is at census track level, so when we get deeper into the project, we may have to do some finer analysis. And there might be some possibilities of errors in local data gathering. Essentially, it's supposed to say historic context and not C context, but as we all are well aware, that the strategic location and the access to transportation, both by highway and railroads, have been the key to success of Bloomington, and they continue to be the success going forward. State Farm has really played a key role in changing our economy from blue collar to white collar. It's, Bloomington is envy of majority of Central Illinois communities and Illinois communities. This city has more strengths than challenges. The location, the strong economy, location, connections, major employers, high skilled workforce, I can go on and on, really, I think, is an envy to most of the Central Illinois communities. In the past 50 years, the population growth is, has nearly doubled, there is always a constant growth, and the growth rate peaked in 90s at about 25%. We anticipate the growth continuing, may not be at the same rate, but there will be growth during this planning horizon period. This is a double-edged sword. We do not have any physical restrictions, which can be a great strength, but if not used, it can be a challenge. The purple here is what Bloomington was in 1970, and each decade, this is the purple, and our surrounding natural environment does not present any physical restrictions on our growth. Again, like I said, this can be a double-edged sword, where it's great that we don't have any restrictions, but it can, if we are not careful, this can become a challenge very Bloomington is becoming increasingly educated. At 44% graduation rate, we are much higher than that of the state averages, which is at 30.3%. The high school graduation rate is at 92.9%, both numbers are great. The skilled workforce is one of the biggest economic tools for Bloomington. Median household income and family household income are both higher than that of the state Unemployment has been consistently lower, even through the recession, we had a very stable economy. Our major sectors- Our major sectors, the current bright spot is leisure and hospitality, which is growing. Majority of our major sectors are either stable, are either flat or declining. Labor shed, this is something that most of the businesses look to before moving into a market, and Bloomington is positioned very well. Our current labor shed extends well beyond 50 miles, and we have nearly about 2,000 members commuting to and from Chicago. And we expect this to grow with the high-speed rail. It's a, from a broadband perspective, McLean County as a whole is a very well-connected community. Serbin really is a great asset and enhances the economic competitiveness of the region. Housing market in 2012 has been all-time low, and the recent numbers are positive. So we hope that this indicates the upswing of market. From a quality-of-life perspective, we have about nine acres of parks per thousand residents. This is according to 2009 Park's Master Plan. That might have changed slightly. 37 miles of bike trails in the community, and 25 of those are right here in Bloomington. This really provides great recreational opportunities that enhances quality of life here in the Bloomington's crime rate is at all-time low. In 2013, the crime rate is lower than that of 1989, thanks to our police department. So in a sense, there are numerous strengths in this area that are being capitalized, not just by the city, but also the community members. There are various efforts going on in the community, like, for example, Light Ready Group. It's a group that's trying to market Bloomington Normal as a technology hub. Central Illinois Regional Airport is becoming more of an economic driver. They are trying to promote about 700 acres as commercial, driving commercial development. EDC, Economic Development Corporation, is trying to focus more on attractions than retention. And also, there is an effort on regional economic and market strategy to promote the region as a whole. So before I move into challenges, I do want to let you know that Bloomington's challenges are not unique, but that doesn't mean that we don't have room for improvement. There are challenges that we definitely have room for improvement. The recent news, we expect that to weigh quite heavily into the community input session as we go into the community input session. So the first thing, just like rest of the country and rest of the world, we are having aging population. What this means is our younger workforce, we are losing our younger workforce and gaining more older workforce. During the planning horizon period, which is the next 20, 25 years, this could become a challenge with the workforce issue. So in the last three years, the workforce has been dropping. This could be, again, the result of the aging population and a number of people filing disabilities, and people just dropping out of labor force due to unemployment. Again, this is all in line with the state trends. However, if you remember, one of our strengths is our educated labor force. So this is an area we need to watch closely. Again, relatively speaking, blue is Bloomington here, brown is Illinois, green is U.S. We are relatively younger compared to state or the nation. Part of it is because we have two great local universities. But the question becomes retention. Are we retaining younger millennials in the community? And right now, at least from our research, we could not find a good metric that says one way or the other. Like, there is no tracking system in place. So we talked about younger population not growing at the same pace as older population. The top maps here, I know these are not very clear. I'll try to explain the best I can. Reds are lower numbers, and greens are higher numbers. And up at the top, these are, this map here is from 2000, and this is 2010 Census. And we are showing 0 to 14-year-olds by Census tract. If you can see, we are losing younger 0 to 14 population between 2000 and 2010. Same applies to 15 to 19-year-olds from 2000 to 2010. Younger population is moving outward. The next challenge that we have is, as we talked about, the median family incomes being higher than that of the state averages. When adjusted to inflation from 2000 to 2010, our median incomes are lower than that of 2000. Again, in line with the state and national trends, really can be attributed to the recent recession. What this means is people need more money to essentially live the same lifestyle as they did a decade ago. This becomes challenging, especially on households on the bottom rung of the income ladder. So these maps, again, not too clear, but up at the top, you can see the median household income in dollars. Red is lower, oranges are below 50K, which is below the community median income, greens being the higher. So we have a concentration of lower median income households in the core of the city. That translates into, on the bottom map, you see this as low-income students in elementary So we have higher median incomes, and our home values and median home values and median rents are both lower than that of the state averages. However, our ownership is not as high as we'd like to see when we have high median incomes and low median home values. We are at 62%. Yes, we are at 62.9% owner occupied and 67.5% in comparison to that of the state. So we looked at what could be the potential causes. Could this be attributed to student populations, transient workforce, or affordability? These are the assessed values, the map here. The light green shows lower assessed values, and darker red shows the higher assessed values. So as you can see, the assessed values in the core are much, much lower than that of the periphery. However, Census defines housing cost burden as 30% of your overall household income paid towards housing costs. That includes your mortgage, your taxes, homeowner's insurance, utilities, et cetera. And what we found out is, we, first of all, as a community, we are at 23% housing cost burdened, then that of the state at 17%. And most of our housing cost burden is concentrated in the core. If you look at the bottom map, red is Census tracts with higher housing cost burden versus green on the periphery with lower housing cost burden. We also looked at the concentration of units. This is like a heat map that shows red as higher concentration of multifamily units and greens as you go out. It goes, it fades out. So you can clearly see that we have a high concentration of multifamily units in the core and along Veterans Parkway. The next thing we looked at is vacancy rates. A number of units that are vacant for three months, six months, 10 months, 12 months, 36 months. What we don't want to see is vacancy rates in the 36-month going up. So these maps here are from, data is from United States Postal Service. And on your left, or right, I should say, up at the top is 2010, and down here at the bottom is 2013. These are 36-month vacancy rates, which is long-term vacancy that we do not want to see go up. What we did see is these numbers have gone up by at least one to two percentage points in some Census tracts. So again, coming back to the map that I showed in the strengths, growth is great, but fiscally responsible growth is definitely sustainable on, you know, the more we grow, it strains the city budgets if it's not fiscally sustainable. Here, we see in the last 50 years, we have about 91% population increase, about 147% corporate area increase, which is two and a half times, 107% increase in street miles. Essentially, this is resulting in 850 fewer people per square mile. So that really does put a stress on city budgets because of increased infrastructure and increased area to cover with public services. We have nearly 200 acres of vacant land currently available. About 450 of it is improved as residential, 400 is zoned as commercial. Again, airport has about 700 acres of land that they're trying to develop as commercial. So before annexing more property, definitely caution should be taken to make sure these are all developed. I'm sure Public Works Department has presented this before. We do have an aging infrastructure issue, just like many other communities in the United States. Most of the infrastructure is built between 1950 and 1980. They estimate a recent sanitary and stormwater plan estimates about 136 million over the period of next 20 years to fix the sanitary and sewer systems to the level of service that's desirable. Our daily water usage is about 11.5 million gallons. Annual usage is 4.3 billion gallons. Again, this is from the water plan. Essentially, what this is, is about 22 months of supply derived from lakes at capacity. This does not take droughts or growth into consideration. Once we take both of those, we do have some serious issue with the waters, and this is much more regional than just Bloomington. Something else that has not been included in any of the previous comprehensive plans, and across United States, communities are starting to consider this, is health issues. In McLean County, based on the two community health assessments and the health, the county health plan, we have about 61.5% of people that are obese or overweight. And of course, obesity is linked to 20-plus chronic illnesses. And the main cause of obesity is sedentary lifestyle and lack of access to healthy foods. So we looked at how land use is playing a role in this. Number of households that can walk to a grocery store is about 8.9%. And this is not considering any of the traffic, the sidewalk conditions, or perception issues of crime, or traffic issues. This is strictly number of housing units that are within a quarter-mile of grocery stores. Nationally, for elementary schools, they say about a mile is a walkable distance. So taking that into consideration, there is about 29.7% of households within a mile of our elementary schools. And so the numbers don't look very pretty when it comes to number of people being able to walk to their destinations. I'm sure this map has been presented before. Majority of the West Side is declared food desert by U.S. Department of Agriculture. The definition comes from low-income, low-access Census tracts. This is a map of fire response time. Ideally, fire department would like to reach every household within six minutes. That's four-minute travel time and two-minute turnaround time. We do have, all the yellows is where you have beyond six minutes. So all of these northeast parts are really beyond reach within the six minutes. To add to the complexity, and again...
Vazu, if I could, I just want to correct. The City of Bloomington does have a mutual aid agreement with Normal for fire and police. Is that correct, Fire Chief?
We do have a business relationship, and you don't have an automatic...
Okay, all right. Just wanted to, yeah, correct that one.
Okay.
Continue. Thanks.
Thank you. So something else that I was quite enlightened learning is the unit hour utilization, which is essentially a measure to say, when you call, will there be somebody to respond? And ideally, fire department would like to see those numbers within .25 to .3. This information is from the recent fire department's plan. We have several days and times, and at several locations, we are well exceeding the UHUs of .25 and .3. So Bloomington does not have many crimes, but the few crimes that we do have are very concentrated. And just for, just out of curiosity, we mapped some liquor licenses on top of that to see how they are correlating, and they're correlating pretty well. This also correlates with densities, the residential densities as well.
And Vazu, I'm just going to note you that you've actually exceeded your time, so if you could...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...could wrap it up.
Yes, thank you, sir. So to put it all together, Bloomington's inner city looks different in nature and character than the rest of the city. So overall, Bloomington as a community has significant strengths, but there are some challenges within the core of the city that definitely need immediate attention, especially during the planning process. So again, these are just a collaboration of all those maps together. Ultimately, what this is doing is, it does have an effect on the landlocked school district 87. It doesn't have to be that way. Bloomington's inner city has a lot of strengths. Majority of the services are here. If you look at taxes per acre, Bloomington's residential, inner-city residential is exhibiting just as strong as rest of the city. The street pattern is very conducive to multiple modes of transportation. The total employment is, there is still employment opportunities within the core, and just by the location of it, is very accessible to the employment centers. The assessed values are much lower than that of rest of the city, which can be an asset if utilized right. And inner city does have the historic districts that add to the cultural value. And of course, downtown Bloomington, that's really making a comeback, that'll act as a commercial anchor. Despite the challenges that the school districts, the inner-city school district is facing, schools continue to be the biggest asset in Bloomington. They do act as neighborhood anchors. And with overall, with overall economy being as strong as it is, and with highly educated community, we do think that now is the time to, first of all, acknowledge this issue and to, going forward, help establish a clear vision for the future.
Thank you.
Sorry. If you want to go with your questions and then go into the next phase, I can do that.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to go ahead and, because we do need to have some time for the council to ask questions. And it is 8:05, and we have budgeted 15 minutes for discussion. Who would like to, so I can get some idea of who would like to weigh in or ask questions? Aside, Alda Woman Sterns. Okay. Well, go ahead. Alda Woman Sterns, and then Aldaman Black.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, that is extremely interesting data. And it's something I've been talking about for a number of years, since my ward is in the center of the city, in terms especially of the EAV and the assessed value of our property. And I'm glad that we're going to see documented data that indeed, it is plummeting, and it is deeply concerning for District 87, and just for, you know, our quality of life in general. We talk a lot about the downtown, that the surrounding area is critically, critically challenged and threatened. And I appreciate seeing some data to back that up, and your concern about it. One quick question other than this is that the, you compared Bloomington with the state of Illinois. Unemployment, you know, housing prices and such. Is the data out there to compare it to a nationwide kind of number? Because obviously, the state of Illinois is extremely stressed and depressed in many ways as well. So how do we compare this, our numbers to, you know, the national scene? How do we do that?
What we can do is, as part of the next phase, we are picking five other similar communities like Bloomington to see what growth... communities like Bloomington to see what growth challenges they have faced or what alerts that they have missed to see how we can learn from their mistakes or something, you know, just to learn from other communities. So what we can do is take Bloomington's information and compare it to those communities and get that data back.
Would those communities be outside the state of Illinois then?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so they would be other, our size and such?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I look forward to, I look forward to that.
To Judy's question, you do have some, you did present us with some metrics where you had the nation, Illinois, and Bloomington.
Yes, right, yes.
And there's no reason why we can't get that. That stuff is readily, very easily available.
It's very, yes, definitely, we can get that information.
On some of the, with just Illinois, Bloomington, I'm just interested in seeing a national number as well. And I thank you, thank you very much.
Definitely, that's easily do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Vasu, for going through this presentation and all the data that's kind of come from a lot of hard work I know you and your staff have been doing. What I'm interested in knowing is, you've got the next step up here. How are the citizens groups coming? I know that you were working about, was it fifteen, sixteen groups, is it that many, or has it been narrowed down, or where are you at with that?
Yes, so the next step is a public input, and we have about seventeen working groups. And for each of the working group, we have a lot of data that we'll be presenting that is very specific to their focus area. Of the seventeen working groups, about ten seem to be very popular. So tomorrow, you'll see an update on Facebook page that we are nearly full on ten of them, but seven of them, like water issues, air quality, seem to intimidate people, and we are not able to recruit as many. So we'll, we'll-
Had a drought this summer, you'd have more, probably.
Sir?
If you had, if we had a drought this summer, you might have had a little more interest.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And you mentioned the Facebook page. I think it's great that you're getting out there in social media in ways that are different than we've done in the past to get a different audience that wants to participate. So I commend you on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments for Vasu? And I would just clarify that, you know, we did talk about this also at our mayor open house, and I encourage people to get involved, and that certainly one of the strengths that you bring is that many different ways that you're attempting to get people involved. This is more than just voting. In many ways, this is probably a way to get involved and have an impact on your community. It's far beyond what you could do when you go to the ballot box. So I would certainly encourage people to get involved. And then also to clarify in terms of planning, some, I think there may have been some misunderstanding. Pretty much all cities and human civilizations have been starting to planning for a little over a hundred years. Once we had automobiles, and we had electricity, and we had utilities, and we had then cars and highways and whatever, you know, people have been involved in this. And very often, we have to have that to encourage any kind of private investment, that this is part of standard process of governing, whether it's private sector or it's public sector. And I think there was a quote in the panel graphs that is, failing to plan is planning to fail. And the plan is better when it reflects more and more perspectives of people of all walks of life and from throughout the community, and I applaud you for attempting to get everyone involved.
Thank you so much, and it's-
Because of social media, there were all kinds of people who were really excited about the video. I got more feedback on that than I had anything else.
Yes, and it did not happen without the support of all of you and the city staff, so we thank you for that. And if you have three more minutes, I'd like to play the video for you here. If not, we'll-
Okay, well, I think, given the fact that we have had our council comments that are a little briefer, we can, we'll come in under budget, three minutes.
Okay, all right.
I'm holding you to that, Vasu.
Oh, this went to the next step, which actually, I'll play the video in a bit. This is the input that we have received so far. All the green is what people value about Bloomington. So far, we've been seeing a lot of small-town feel with big-city amenities and safe community, and all of these come through, and people really do want to see a revitalized downtown and infrastructure investment and some green transportation options. This is the demographic breakdown.
Okay, well, that wasn't even three minutes. Or you had something else? Oh, I'm sorry. Here, I was excited.
Specifically, the downtown Bloomington area is full of history.
It has encouraged my, like, love of the arts. All the opportunities we have here, it's just great.
There is life going on here. There are thriving neighborhoods. There are interesting stories to be told.
I love the fact that Bloomington caters to and serves people with disabilities.
This is a vibrant community. We love the universities. We're into the sports programs.
I've lived here all my life. I like the school district, the parks.
It has a small-town feel, but yet it also has elements of a bigger city.
With strong agricultural roots and a deep history, Bloomington has always been a gem in the heart of Illinois, and we want it to stay that way. That's why we're visioning for the future and letting you decide how Bloomington will look in the next phase of its life. It's called a comprehensive plan.
A comprehensive plan is a long-range plan that will help guide the future development of the city.
We need people to get involved to tell us what they want their community of the future to look like, regardless of whether they're young people and want to raise a family here, or whether they're people who are ready for retirement age and like to spend the rest of their lives here.
And we want everyone to be a part of it. This is our city, and it's only going to be great if we all contribute to the vision of what it can be.
It is critical that a comprehensive plan be owned by and developed by citizens.
The more that we hear from our citizens, the better decisions that we're going to make.
You can't rely on the government to fix everything, so it's got to come within the members' support of the community.
We need to care about what we do and care about the plans and think ahead.
One way to get problems solved is to get involved. I have a saying my husband always says, that if you are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem.
Those choices need to be made by the stakeholders, by the people who live here in Bloomington, yes, not in some conference room somewhere else or by a consultant.
This community is open to input. I've always known that when I've had something to say, people were happy to listen and-
And it's important to hear from the entire community and get input into the comprehensive plan so that it benefits all in the community.
It's about nurturing not only something good for now and good for the community, but it's also something that, is something that will last beyond me and hopefully for the generations to come, that we have thought through some things that are long-lasting.
So get involved. We want to hear your ideas and dreams.
Bring it on, Bloomington.
Bring it on, Bloomington.
Bring it on, Bloomington.
Bring it on, Bloomington.
For our neighborhood.
For our children.
For the arts.
For education.
For public access and mobility.
For revitalizing neighborhoods that we already have.
For generations to come.
Let's plan it.
Plan it.
Plan it.
See it.
See it.
And live it together.
And live it together.
And live it together.
Just so that it could, this video reached about twenty-one thousand people.
Oh, cool. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Vasu.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Very much appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thanks for all you're going to be doing.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to move right along on our agenda to item eight C, professional engineering services agreement with Hanson Professional Services for developing a streets master plan. And it is eight fourteen now, and we have twenty minutes. I'm going to go ahead and very quickly turn it over to our city manager.
And Mayor, this may go quickly. We are recommending that the council approve this service agreement with Hanson Professional Services. In our backup report, we did give a number of reasons why we believe Hanson is best suited because of prior work to help us in developing this streets master plan, which includes a number of items, including the detailed methodology. So that going forward, we're trying to be much more objective, fair, and equitable in prioritizing street projects as opposed to just subjective opinions, either by engineers or others. So I think this is a significant first step in helping us ultimately achieve a much more comprehensive, long-term streets master plan. We'd be happy to answer any questions. We have Jim Karch, Public Works Director, here to also answer anything, any detailed questions you might have on this contract.
Questions and comments from the council. All the women Sterns?
Thank you, Mayor. This hundred thousand is coming out of which, which part of our streets funding? I mean, is this coming out of the bond, the six million dollars that we allocate?
No, it's not. It's coming out of our capital improvement plan. As I can recall, it's coming out of the general fund. It is one of the very few capital improvement projects that remained in the budget when it was adopted by the council.
Right. And the capital improvement projects that we already have, that we're already moving forward on, I mean, how does this impact that?
Well, basically, this is going to help us really add the critical element, and that is the streets capital improvement. We have talked about various projects, some large, some small, but what we lack is a real comprehensive. Unfortunately, many, or fortunately, many of the plans in the past or listings of projects were generated by the engineers, or they were generated by you, the elected officials. You know, the east side of Lafayette Street is one of those. But we have the remaining portion of Lafayette, which could be a very expensive project. And unfortunately, we just, as the staff, haven't had the time to pull together, hence we need some outside help. A much more methodical way of not only listing many of these projects, but coming up with a way to show the public there is a cost-benefit analysis that can be done to help show that if some of the funding is provided for some of these projects, there will be a, not only a municipal, but a regional benefit for some of these projects, such as the Hamilton Road Bund to Commerce project.
Or the Lafayette project, for that matter, the Lafayette project.
Definitely, Lafayette, as well as others.
So this is going to, this is going to prioritize. It looks to me-
It'll come up with a methodology for use in the future by staff, as well as putting together a prioritized list of projects.
Okay. Just a comment, and you can comment back if you like. It looks to me like there's a lot more than streets in here. You know, there's multimodal transportation, there's infill, we're talking about how to get infrastructure to infill. It just looks to me like there's a lot more than streets in this, and am I, am I correct? I mean, I read through the contract, and that's what it looked like.
No, you're correct. But again, anytime we're seeking state funding, or we're trying to get our projects put on the state tip, transportation improvement plan, all those issues have to be considered. I also want to, you know, give this caveat. There is things that ultimately could be added in the future, such as all our bridges, you know, some of our traffic signals that may be needed, et cetera. So I, this is a major first step, but there will be additional elements to be added that just cannot be accommodated within the current price estimate here.
Okay.
Okay. Alderman Fazini, Lauer and Black, I noted you in that order.
Okay, two things. Number one, I'd like to go back to Robert's Rules of Order and actually get a motion on the table, on the floor before we start talking about it.
Okay.
So in that respect, I would like to move that we approve what is listed in seven C, so that we can have discussion.
Okay, is there a second? One second, second, okay. And go ahead. Did you want to make a comment as well?
No.
Okay, Alderman Lauer, and then Black.
Again, I'm just looking at the cost overall, city manager, and I appreciate all the work you've done on this project. We just led a contract, I believe it was in January, for well over three hundred thousand to look at our lakes, and this is the same company, is that correct?
I think you're referring to up in Lake Evergreen and Lake Bloomington.
Yeah.
Some very, very complex analysis that has to be done. It's a mandate by state law.
Right.
Yes, and Hanson has some strong expertise in that area.
So we're pushing into almost a half a million dollars in a short period of time. Have we done anything to actually shop this a little bit? I assume that there's no one locally that could have done this for us or even come close, is that correct?
Well, again, we are recommending Hanson. We do believe that they are best suited. They have done some previous experience where they have used traffic demand modeling that has really, I believe is going to be an integral part of our methodology going forward. However, again, we're asking to waive the bidding so that we focus on Hanson and we utilize them for this particular project. Keep in mind that this hundred thousand is probably much, much less than what we could be spending on a very significant project. The sanitary sewer and stormwater master plan costs seven hundred thousand. This particular phase of the project is a little under a hundred thousand, and they have some prior experience working with us, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Black, and then Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to say that I'm on board with this type of proposal because it's looking at many different levels that we need to for transportation. We can't just think in a one-dimensional way of streets. We have to think about it in the sewers that's being covered here. I said that bike paths are being covered. I'd like to see a large group of things taken into consideration because, again and again, we continue to hear that cars are not the wave of the future, that's going to be multimodal. I mean, I hear from the neighbors that they want to see connections to Constitution Trail from where they're at, and this takes that into account. And also, what I guess my concern would be is that we have this great data, we create this methodology, let's just assume that it's the perfect, the best in the world. It's what we do with that data that comes next. And I know that in conversations I've had with some people, some folks like when they can see how their street pothole fits into the larger scheme of things, some folks don't. So as long as the council still has the mechanism to make the decisions about what the priorities are, I think I'm on board, so, thank you.
Oh, okay. All right. If there's anything, we'll go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no needs to announce, Madam Clerk. And then we move on to eight D, draft of the city sidewalk master plan. And Jim, you got fifteen minutes.
Mayor, let me, I do want to just say something. This is a unique master plan we're bringing to the council because this has been prepared, drafted, and completed solely by city employees. And I think we owe a debt of gratitude to Jim Karch, his engineers, some interns. I think this has been a couple of years in the making, but this particular sidewalk master plan is a city employee-generated and prepared document, so I, and secondly, this is going to be the first of many different components of our capital improvement plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later this, later on this evening. But right now, I'd like to turn to Jim to kind of give an overview of this draft sidewalk master plan document.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor and city council, the city manager stole two of my starting points, so I will go ahead and first kind of give a broad overview and then some thanks to particular staff. First, as the city manager pointed out, this is a key component of a larger capital improvement plan. You know, we've brought to you in the past ratings of our pavements, but that's dealing with resurfacing. Now, we just voted on a contract to deal with capital projects, but we've dealt with the sewer master plan. This is going to be talking about ratings that's dealing with storm, sewer, and sanitary. We've also been dealing with the ratings of alleys, brick streets. We've done a lot of work internally in Public Works to try to get all of this to come together so the council can have more objective criteria moving forward. So with that being said, I think it's important to give a lot of thanks to staff. We have two people in the audience in particular, Steve Arney, a miscellaneous technician for us. Steve, I'm sorry, I'm going to embarrass him. Steve, stand up. And then Jeff Rains, right beside him. Jeff Rains, our engineering technician in charge of sidewalks. Many of you, when you see me respond to you and I say Jeff Rains, I CC him, that's Jeff Rains, you can put a face to the name next time. Both of these two were instrumental in a lot of this effort. I mean, this is, while they were tremendous in this, thank you so much, they, while they were tremendous in this, it did involve a lot of other folks, a lot of park staff, big thanks to that, the legal department, others. This, this really, again, is, I know there's a lot on the agenda, but I don't take this lightly, I hope you don't either. This was a lot of work by our staff, whenever they care, they cared about this a lot. They put a lot of their heart into this because they wanted to see this done well. So I'm really proud of them and the work that they put together. That being said, this is just a start. It's good for you to know this is just a draft. I'll talk to you later about the fact that we already are going to start, be starting to make some changes to this, trying to be responsive to some of the things that we've seen. But we need to get this out there. We need to start getting feedback from people. What we did is, we actually went through and re-rated all of the sidewalks, and you probably get sick of me saying that, but we like to rate things in Public Works. And in our, in our sidewalks, what we did is actually a parcel-by-parcel rating. What I mean by that is in front of everybody's property, we rated that individual property. If you'll recall, many times, yeah, that's a lot of work. That is a lot of work that took multiple years. There were also summer staff that we used. Again, Jeff Rains was instrumental. We used graduate management interns. We threw a lot of, a lot of resources toward a lot of that rating that goes into our geographic information system. And actually, in talking with Jeff today, we are fairly close to being up to date, keeping that active as we go. We're interacting with our own departments and other contractors, so we keep that information fresh, and really, that's a great system to have. But we did this parcel-by-parcel, so that is a tremendous improvement, even better than streets, which is block by block separating out, separating out intersections. We are going to be keeping this document, we are going to be keeping with the block-by-block mentality, obviously. This is something we presented to you before. We're going to keep with that. But we're going to be dealing with some big issues with sidewalks. Trees, trees and sidewalks- Trees, trees and sidewalks are a big issue for many citizens, for our council, for both the aesthetics of trees, the beautiful aspect of trees, but also the fact that many times trees don't play well with public infrastructure. So how do you find that balance? And that's, that's a tough one to find a balance to, because everybody loves trees, it provides the character to the neighborhood, but it also costs money whenever they lift up sidewalks and push out curbs, so it's a, and they also always find the sanitary sewer services, because the roots of trees just love those lines. So trees are tough, but we're going to have to deal with that in this plan, and we're going to be looking for direction from the council and input from our citizens. We're also going to be trying to make sure we comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This, this plan that you see before you will qualify for our transition plan, which is required for the city of Bloomington. It was back in the 1990s, the last one we had. So we have to update this. This is something that is very much needed. A transition plan is really nothing more than saying, here's where we're at, here's where we need to be, how are we going to get there? So eventually, that's what this document will be. And then carriage walks is another biggie. Recently, a lot of you have been, you know, you've been seeing the emails, you've been seeing some of the different feedback from citizens, and we've been trying to balance that desire for the historic component of our community and the liability issues that come along with that. I'm here to let you know that on the 21st of July of this month, the Committee of the Whole will be addressing specifically carriage walks. We already have a lot of that information put together, we're going to be trying to look to make some alternate recommendations, we've looked at other communities, and we're trying to find a good balance that we hope that the council and citizens will find palatable. So it's always good to try to find that, if possible. I guess I wanted you to see numbers, but I don't want you to be put to sleep by numbers. I guess let me, let me let you know, many times I come before you, unfortunately, gloom and doom about our streets at times. And I guess I want to give you some positive news, that our sidewalks are in better shape than our streets. Whenever you do an improvement on a sidewalk, it lasts longer than a street. Streets deteriorate quick, more quickly. Sidewalks last significantly longer, so whenever you improve them, they'll stay better longer. So as opposed to with our streets, where we have 25% to 30% of our streets in a four, number four, you're used to our system by now, one to 10, we've been talking about this forever, we decided to do the sidewalks in the same way. But with, we say four and less, with our streets, once you hit a rating of four, you start seeing potholes. We all know those streets. 25% to 30% of our streets are in that rating, whereas our sidewalks, if you look at our sidewalks, where if you look at the four and less, it's only about 15% of our sidewalks.
Finally, some good news, right? We'll call you Little Jim Sunshine now.
I'm thankful to finally be the Public Works Director that brings you good news, that's a positive, we'll take it. So we wanted to, that's the good positive aspect of this, that it's, it's not a gloom and doom at this point with our sidewalks, but we need a plan. I've heard many of you say, to put on the woes from the past, that we underfunded our streets. Oh, now we're to the point where now we have this backlog, and it's really tough to kind of get back caught up with our streets. We don't want that to happen with our sidewalks. If we have an intelligent plan starting now, we can really make sure we maintain an excellent way to get people to and from. You talk about the recreation of our community, getting people around, our sidewalks are a critical part of that. So it's good for you to know some other issues that we've got, though, our ramps. One of the difficulties with this ADA is they keep changing, they've changed the requirements over time, which is very difficult on municipalities, not just the city of Bloomington. So what we, what we are going to do is, we're recommending out of this plan, the proposed service level. What we're saying for this is going to be, when we resurface, we're required to touch, any ramp that gets touched by resurfacing, you have to redo the ramp. So we're saying, well, let's, whenever we, whenever we resurface, let's just make it part of that, and really not deal with ramps unless there is some, some people that are visually impaired or other handicap issues we need to deal with outside of the resurfacing program. So any of the resurfacing costs moving forward, we're going to recommend that when you approve a dollar figure for resurfacing, that a portion of that goes toward the ramps. That'll reduce the amount of money we put towards streets, but it allows us to stay compliant. So there's positives and negatives of every action, and that's the one for this. So let's summarize. What would the plan accomplish? Again, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to fix the sidewalks that are rated the one, two, three, and four, that fair minus and worse. We're trying to take care of tripping hazards, we're trying to make it so it's safe for people to walk. We're trying to also look at some gaps in the community. We all probably, you can probably all think about some places in your wards where there's pieces of sidewalk, a block of sidewalk missing. Right now, we don't have any funding to do any of those, and so this, part of this plan is to set some priority one and priority two levels for the sidewalks, the gaps to be filled in. And then also, we talk about, we have to bring these ramps up to code. Part of that's required, part of that is, is our citizens need that. And then the last one, this plan really tries to reduce the citizens, the city's liability and our exposure for some tripping hazards and the like. So let's talk about funding, because so much of that always comes back to money, and we know it's tight at the city with our funding. Where we've been, you can see up on the screen, this is a range, the darker red shows where we have been spending money over the last five years. So then the higher number, the, I don't really, I'm not good with colors, but the, I guess, tan, I don't know, somebody could probably correct me, but let's call it the tan color, is, you can see that really, if we doubled our spending in general on sidewalks, we're in the hundreds of thousands, not millions. I think that's a key thing, that we just doubled our spending on sidewalks, within 10 years, we could eliminate all of our sidewalks rated one to four, fill in a lot of the gaps, deal with a lot of our liabilities, and we could have a very good functioning sidewalk program that the city could be proud of. Staff, we tried to make sure that we didn't try to bite off too much, we understand that it's difficult right now with funding. But this plan tried to be reasonable with the, to try to stretch just a little bit, so that we could find a way to be able to get our sidewalks in a good shape, in good shape. So how do we break this out? Again, this is a 10-year plan, so over that 10 years, again, I don't want the numbers to get to be overwhelming, but we just wanted you to see that over 10 years in today's dollars, we still are looking to partner with citizens, now that we've, again, a lot of credit to our staff, now that we do a lot of outreach, 50/50 money actually gets spent now. It actually gets exhausted, and that's never happened in the past. Again, all the credit goes to staff for that. But we want to continue that, and then we also want to make sure we're spending our money, as you can see, on the sidewalks, one, twos, and threes, but then the sidewalks rated four, that takes a lot of dollars as well, because of the overall percentage of the sidewalks that are rated four. So again, you can see the breakdown by percentage. The ramps, I think it's important for you to see that, as you recall that last slide, we were spending about $5.5 million for, for the overall sidewalks over a 10-year period. If we brought all of our ramps up to code, it would actually be $7.5 million in general. So the ramps are a big exposure for the city, it's a big cost to the city. But that's why staff has recommended, let's spread that out, and let's, let's touch the, whenever we touch a ramp, then let's redo it, let's try to not bite off more than we can chew with ramps. So a lot of those costs you saw before, the about $600,000 a year doesn't include ramps, that would be a part of, the cost for all the ramps would be part of resurfacing. So with that, I'd like to let you know that in the back, there were, I don't know if there are any, nope, there's, there's none left, and that's not a surprise, there were some documents back in the back, and you each have one with you, a hard copy, but I'd like to also let you know this is online. There are some sheets I can see back there that are two, this is a single page, a single page summary of the overall plan, and at the bottom, it shows a link where citizens can go to see the plan, online, and they can also, we want to hear the comments, we want to hear their feedback. All this is tonight is a presentation, opening this up for starting the dialogue, both with the council and with our citizens. So my thanks to you for the support, for all of our staff and what they've done, and we just look forward to trying to continue the dialogue on sidewalks.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you for coming in two minutes under budget. We like under budget, anyway.
Glad to help.
So, I mean, I wonder if we can then begin, we have budgeted about 15 minutes for discussion, and we can, I think that is starting here now at 8:35. Other questions, comments? Alderman Black, we'll start with you, and then Lauer and Sterns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jim, for putting this together and such a, I love these books, and they're just so kind and good to go through, and I know it's online too, and I'll keep a digital copy as well, and the pictures are fantastic, I know you guys were out taking those, and it's really good to see a visual aid of what each one of these looks like, because sometimes it can be challenging to describe the different levels and what makes it what, so, that's fantastic. My points, to be brief, are three-pronged. Number one would be the Carriage Ways. I'm looking forward to that discussion next week, I've got a lot of feedback about that, and interested to see kind of, what I read in here isn't exactly lining up with what I think we want to do, so I'll just hang tight for that next week. Number two would be the 50/50 program. Thinking about that, I see that we continue to support that overwhelmingly in the report, but would there be a way for the 50/50, say that the homeowner has to kick in, I don't know, five grand, that they could split that up over $1,000 over five months, as opposed to just one lump sum?
Actually, if I could interject, the City Manager and I talked about this a while ago, about maybe having people be able to take their chunk and pay for it in the water bill. You, this is, I'm catching the City Manager off-guard, this is several months back. So anyway, just want to interject.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And at that time, David's response was that it wasn't going to be that big of an administrative burden, but we'll see.
Right. Because even if it was, you know, let's say it's a five-grand cost, and I roll over five months, and there's a small administrative fee for that, I think that's more reasonable than having to come up with five grand to take care of, you know, when I need to, so, just a thought as we move forward. And then finally, I just want to make sure that I'm, you know, saying it out there, that I've gotten a lot of feedback from some residents about the ADA compliance, and a lot of people will say, oh, should we be putting these out there? I have handicap residents who struggle to get around, because they can't get down our sidewalks, and that's, those are the types of people that we can't forget. And I think that's definitely, we're spending our money, and it's a value to our community, and we got to keep everybody in mind when we make our streets and sidewalks, so, thank you.
If I could briefly comment on the carriage walks, just to let you know, in this document, please understand that we are going to be making major, you know, there's some major tweaks that are going to be seen on the 21st. So we did have to kick this out, there had to come a point when you said, this is frozen in time, but with changes coming, so that's why you saw the slide that said, you know, that's already in motion.
Alderman Lauer.
As it pertains to the state right-of-ways, and how we deal with that, and keeping our ADA compliance in those areas, is there anything that we can do to push back and kind of make the state do what they need to do, rather than, such as South Center Street where I've got no curbing left, and the citizens are upset about it?
Yeah, the city always tries to work as best we can with Illinois, the state of Illinois, but also, you know, Illinois Department of Transportation. There are different, different times when the city has even sent letters encouraging the state on particular issues. I always think of the overlay that was done on southbound center, you know, that was, it just, it failed prematurely, and, you know, they didn't do, you know, some of the milling that needed to be done, the city sent a letter asking them to come through and do some more maintenance. So yeah, there's always times when the city reaches out. We have a good partnership with IDOT, we do strive to maintain that, but it's good for, always for the city to make sure that they're aware of our needs.
And Alderman Sterns.
Thank you, Jim, for the, you know, presentation. It's very interesting, and I, too, have a lot to say about Carriage Ways, because some of these elements are very unique in historic areas and in the inner city. And frankly, the Victorians, which, you know, some of us really prize, and hopefully, you know, it's really a key element of the core of the city, the Victorian construction. And the Carriage Ways are a very integral part of a Victorian house. My own is 1889 or so. And without the Carriage Way, you've kind of, you've ruined the look and feel. And so I look forward to that discussion next week, and that's all I'll say about Carriage Ways. But they're critically important to the architectural integrity of a historic structure. And leaving that alone, I want to go on to the, the school routes. And I think it's really great to see this in here, these walking routes to school. So is there any, you know, interaction with the district, school districts, in terms of, you know, encouraging or somehow facilitating the use of these walking routes, instead, you know, as opposed to, of course, all the busing and that kind of thing? Because, I mean, we have them in here, and I really like them.
Sure. Did you have a particular type of education in mind of how we can work with the school?
No, I was just curious, it's just a simple question. Are we, are we trying to sort of move toward a time where we can encourage the use of these walking routes versus all the busing and all the, you know, across-town stuff that goes on? And I don't have children in the school, so I, you know, I'm not as familiar as parents are, but...
One of the particular ways we actually do try to do that is by putting a priority on our school walking routes, because in order to really want them to use them, they've got to be in good shape. So one of the things this plan does is to acknowledge where they're at, and to say, we need to make sure they're, they're in good shape to allow students to be able to walk it.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Jim. City Manager David Hales, looks like you've got another comment.
Just, what we would ask is for the council to review this document, we're sure that you may not have had time to go through it. Now's the time that we're looking for input, what's not addressed, what needs to maybe be better clarified, so before we bring to you a final sidewalk master plan, we really want your input. And I'll talk in just a minute a little bit more on the entire CIP and the communication strategy, so, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Actually, we're not in as difficult a position, I thought we were, as I thought we were going to be, I thought maybe we were even going to have to bring out COTS as we went into the wee hours, but we're not there. We are moving on to item 8E, and just for information, that item is going to be polled, and I'm going to turn that over to our corporate council to explain, we still have some tweaking to do on this, I believe, before we bring this to the council next, in the next meeting? Is that right?
Yeah, just real quick, this is something, as you know, we've worked with the council to try and draft over the last few months. I've also worked, been working behind the scenes with the Public Access Counselor's Office, the State's Attorney's Office, and I had an in-depth conversation today with somebody from the Public Access Counselor's Office on this, with a few more suggestions, potential ways that we can maybe address this in a couple of different ways. Also wanted to take into account a couple other comments and suggestions we've gotten from the council. So as opposed to doing this piecemeal, we thought it might be best to bring this back before you at the next meeting, so we don't have to keep amending this and bring it back to the council. So my suggestion, we just hold this off for another two weeks, come back and vote on it at that time.
Okay, now do we need, we need a motion to...
No, I think it's already been pulled.
It was already pulled, okay. I haven't been to my email since before our early morning meeting. Thank you. All right, we will move right on to the City Managers' discussion.
Mayor, let me just mention a topic, as I've been talking with our directors and staff, one thing we're going to bring back to you is a draft of a capital improvement program communication plan. Included in that will be a timeline. Now, why that's important, it's just like tonight, you've got the streets draft master plan. Previously, we presented a facilities master plan, as well as sanitary sewer and stormwater. Eventually, we'll be adding water, et cetera. We believe that there is a good way, and that's something we want your input, on how we engage the public on all these elements, which are part of a very comprehensive capital improvement program, one of which Bloomington hasn't had in the past. I've been talking to the mayor of some other ideas that he'll share with you later on about how we can engage, similar to the comprehensive plan, but how we can engage the public, citizens, business owners, et cetera, to have multiple opportunities to weigh in on, comment on, give suggestions on all aspects of our five, 10, and 20-year capital improvement plan. We do feel, just like with any budget, we have some significant challenges. When you look at the operating budget, you know, it doesn't look as rosy as it could be, given some of the assumptions we're making on revenues, as well as some of our costs and expenditures, labor costs and so forth. Then when you add a capital improvement budget, which is usually one of these things that come after you solve and fund your operating budget, during good times, you spend a little bit more, during bad times, you spend less, if anything at all. Some of you might recall, that's why we were at that situation back in '09, '10, there was very little in the way of capital improvements and expenditures being made. But once again, we think there needs to be a comprehensive approach, similar to what the comp plan is, we want to bring back to you some ideas, get your ideas, and then ultimately have you, the council, help give approval to what is going to be our comprehensive CIP communication plan to engage the citizens. Because the fact of the matter is, there is no amount of probably political will or taxpayer will and desire to immediately, you know, over the next five, 10, even 20 years, deal with a significant backlog of deferred maintenance on many and many of deal with a significant backlog of deferred maintenance on many and many of these issues. But, I, I'm a firm believer, in, in many other communities, as we've done this, the critical first step is to begin to educate, to inform, and get people to, to recognize the problem, and then have them be part of the solution. Yes, we do have some dedicated water, sewer, and stormwater fees, but we have only the general fund to address streets generally, than motor fuel tax and sidewalks and many other things. So, again, we're gonna bring back to you kind of some, some details, some strategy, and we're gonna seek your input on that. Next item, I just do wanna mention that, as I've been briefing the mayor for the remaining meetings in July and even into August, unfortunately, we're gonna continue to see some very heavy agendas. There is a lot of, I, I think, items in the work where we desperately need council direction, some input. So we hope you will bear with us, because many of these items at the staff level, at my level, we really need to engage the council and ask for your help and support. A press release just went out tomorrow, late this afternoon. We do have an interim Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts Director who's coming in, Bobby, and I, can you, her last name is, I don't have that in front of me, but she's the retired executive director of the Champagne Parks District. She's coming on board to help us in this transition. We're very fortunate to have her come on board. And then we'll have some other news in the very near future on some others. So we continue to aggressively move ahead in trying to recruit, both on a permanent basis and where appropriate, on an interim basis, some of the vacancies we have. So, thank you very much, Mayor. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. And I did, actually, Rachel, would you please stay for just a second? We wanna thank, this is Rachel's last city council meeting. Bye, Rachel. Thank you. Well, what an exit. Okay. Well, I, I said that I was gonna be draconian, and I was gonna live within my own guidelines, 90 seconds or less. So, let me really quickly, I had, I think, hopefully, we'll become a very productive meeting today with Alderman Fazini and our legal counsel, city manager with, at different times, with some people who are potentially interested in, in our downtown and making developers, investors. And so we're hoping to make some progress there. Related to that, I did go to Pontiac and kind of explored their downtown a little more. It's been a while since I've been there. Went there on Saturday, and look at how they have taken advantage of the Route 66. And they've probably taken more of advantage than we want, we probably don't want, quite as much of the emphasis on Route 66 in all their murals and everything. But it's certainly something that, that's a piece of a cash cow for them, and now that we've got the visitor's center coming, that's certainly something we want to continue to explore. Related to that, there will be a groundbreaking on July 30th for the visitor's center, the Route 66 visitor's center in the First floor of the History Museum, and that's something I've been working on for a year, and it's perhaps the most important, if not one of the most important, groundbreakings since I've been mayor. I really wanted to be there, but unfortunately, it's the day that I'm taking my oldest son to Martinique. I don't know why it had to be July 30th, but I won't be there. I'm sure our mayor pro tem and Alderman Karen Schmidt will be there. It's also in her ward. So this is certainly an exciting time. And beyond that, I again wanted to wish Rachel well, and that's all I have. Who, who needs, like to have some council comments? All right. Alderman, excuse me, Sterns.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry John Kennedy is not here, and we, is John gone at this point, David?
Yes, he is.
And neither, I don't see anyone else from Parks, but maybe there is. But I did wanna compliment the Miller Park fireworks display. It's on my Facebook page, some amazing pictures. And I thought that the Parks people did an outstanding job. I'm sure those of, all of you who are here would probably agree. Just grooming the park, it was absolutely gorgeous. The, the display was nice. The police did a fantastic job, I think we saw the police chief here, of patrolling the whole thing. It was just, I got a lot of compliments from the citizens, and one just the other day that I need to put on email to them, but really, I mean, I think, I thought it was just an outstanding effort and spoke very, very well in the city. I liked to see the park that quiet all the time, 'cause it was. I mean, the, the people having picnics, it was no disturbances, no nothing. But anyway, it was, it was great. The other thing is a quick comment on the plan. I appreciate, I love quotes, and yeah, if we fail to plan, we plan to fail, and, and I, I love that. It's, it's a great quote. I just wanna, I grew up here, and I've seen all the changes from the 50s. Wow. And I guess that's one of the advantages of getting to a certain age. When you've seen the inner city actually deconstructed almost, I came back to my historic neighborhood on purpose, for a reason, and I, and I love being there. Is it challenging? Unbelievable. But is it worth it? To me, it is. And I've seen the deconstruction, if you will, of, I've watched it my whole life. Went to Franklin School on Westland Campus. Everybody walked to school. It, it was kind of a utopian thing. And guess what? I mean, it all went away. Eastland Mall came, downtown went away. You know, we talk about form-based code. It's, it's so revolutionary, it's so new. We need it. Well, guess what? We had it. My, my grandparents lived on the west side above a grocery store, you know, for 50 years. And now we need to be above retail establishments. It, it's just fascinating. But it didn't happen by accident. The inner city has really, really suffered. It happened kind of by planning at some point. All our kids had to be bused, you know, all the inner city schools had to go, Jefferson, Franklin. Very, very interesting. I do look forward to that discussion, and I thought that the data we got tonight was extremely interesting. Thank you so much.
Alderman Lauer.
Yeah, just real quick, I'd like to thank you, David, and thank Patty Lindforce for her cognizance on the refunding of those bonds, and something I've been urging for a long time. And I think it's a, it's money that's out there, and if we can put the effort in, I think it's well worth it. Thank you very much. Also, Mayor, you know, I spent a lot of time in Pontiac with extended family up there, actually, many generations in the area. And one of the things that strikes me about Pontiac is that they really embrace their own original culture, okay? And that's something that I think sometimes we kinda miss the boat here with. And I think, Judy, you were, you were touching on that. So, just an idea, anybody wants to come up and be my guest, you're, you're welcome. I'm probably up there at least one weekend or, or one weekend evening for dinner a month. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderman, quickly. Second by Alderman Painter, Alderman favor signature, I say aye? Opposed, can stay. Thank you.